Good evening, welcome to the meeting of the Fairfield Representatives Town Meeting on April 27th, 2020. This is again being held via WebEx, so I hope everyone is patient. For RTM members and presenters, please keep your microphones on mute until I recognize you to speak. The only option, the only difference from that will be when we're ready to take a vote, you can unmute to give your vote. If you want to be recognized, please write in the chat box, make sure it's to everyone, and tell me that you want to be recognized. I ask that the clerk please do the roll call.
Chief Chisari? Mike Mahoney?
Here.
Thank you. Veronica Monahan? Amy O'Shea?
Here.
Bill Gerber? Karen McCormick? Cindy Perrom?
I'm here, thank you.
Jeff Steele?
I'm here.
Alex Durrell?
I'm here, thank you.
Matt Jacob?
Matt is definitely on the call, yes, I'm here too.
Okay, thank you. Karen Piscilli?
Here.
Laura Carson?
Here.
Alice Kelly?
Here.
Meredith Odenek?
Here.
Marcy Spolier? Josh Garskoff?
Marcy's here.
Thank you. Julie Gottlieb?
Here.
Joe Seibert?
Here.
Jay Wolke?
Here.
Matt Ambrose?
Here.
Hannah Gale?
Here.
Lisa Havy?
Here.
Tamisha Paul Dunmore?
Here.
Lauren Bovee?
Here.
Mark McDermott? Jill Vergara?
Here.
Kara Whackerman?
Here.
Hank Ferentz?
I'm here.
Pam Iacono?
Here.
Christine Messina?
Here.
Peter Tellman?
Here.
Drew Georgiades?
Here.
Rick Rower?
Here.
Chrissy Kelly?
Here.
Bill Paragini?
Here.
Janine Eleanello?
Here, here.
Elizabeth Altabelli? Frank Patis? Marissa Ringel?
Okay, let's say the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America
and to the republic for which it stands,
one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Let's pause for a moment of silence in recognition of all of our first responders and healthcare workers and the people who have passed from this disease. Item two on the agenda is to consider and act upon the minutes of the regular meeting held on February 24th, 2020, and the special meeting held on April 13th, 2020. Can I have a motion to approve these minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I can't see hands, okay. Who's that?
That was Rick Rower.
Who is that? Okay, Rick, can I have a second for some?
Drew Georgiades seconded.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on these minutes? Okay, so we'll have a vote now. All in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Is anybody opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you. The motion carries and the minutes are approved. Item three on the agenda, to hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Finance, whereas it is in the best interest of the Town of Fairfield Water Pollution Control Authority to purchase and install a new generator at the wastewater treatment plant, and whereas the cost of purchasing and installing a new generator is now $717,900, where $347,250 reimbursement is provided through a federal pre-disaster mitigation grant, through a FEMA grant administered by the State of Connecticut's Department of Energy Emergency Management and Homeland Security. And the remaining balance of $370,650 is to be funded by the Water Pollution Control Authority, and whereas $115,750 was previously approved by town bodies to be funded by the WPCA for this project. Now therefore, be it resolved that Brenda L. Cupchik, First Select Woman of the Town of Fairfield, be and hereby is duly authorized to enter into and sign contracts on behalf of the Town of Fairfield Water Pollution Control Authority with the State of Connecticut's Department of Emergency Management and Homeland Security for the purpose of obtaining a federal FEMA grant and to accept and expend said grant. Further resolved that the First Select Woman be and hereby is authorized to provide such additional information and execute such other documents as may be required by the state or federal government in connection with said contracts and to execute any amendments, rescissions, and resissions thereto to secure said grant. And further resolved that the purchasing authority be and hereby is authorized to enter into the proposed contract with L. Holzner Electric Company to provide all labor materials, equipment, and all else necessary for the replacement of the generator and the automatic transfer switch equipment at the wastewater treatment plant as detailed in bid number 202038 in an amount not to exceed $717,900. Therefore, an additional $254,900 is hereby authorized to be funded by the WPCA. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Representative Iacono?
Okay, Representative Carson moved and Representative Iacono, second. And so I'd like to first ask if Mr. Carey is on the call, and if you could address this item. Brian Carey?
What you have, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, okay. I'm getting used to saying that quite a bit.
[laughing]
So, this project was in front of you a while back. We've had some holdups because of FEMA approvals. So the project was originally bid in January 15th of 2019. We've been waiting for over a year for FEMA to grant an extension deadline of the project. Took them a year to get us the extension of the project grant. Grant was originally awarded to the town in 2016 as part of the Sandy Recovery money through the CDG-BDR Disaster Relief Grant. We had, because of the delay, we had to go back out to bid as FEMA's request, and the project cost came in at $717,000, and $717,900 is what you're seeing before you. The total overage adjustment of $139,150 is being funded out of the WPCA fund, which was approved by the WPCA in January of 2020. Right now, we are ready to go, this is a shovel-ready project, and as long as the RTM approves it tonight, we'll have contracts signed within a week with a notice to proceed to the contractor. This project is critical infrastructure for the WPCA facility, and it will be tied into the microgrid.
Okay.
I can answer any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Brian, the microgrid is the solar panels?
Hold on, hold on a sec, who's speaking?
I'm sorry, that was Rick Rower.
Okay, so Rick, we'll start with you, but after this, we need, first of all, I want to ask everyone to be on mute because we're getting some background, and then if you could please message me if you want to speak, but we'll start with Rick.
Okay. Brian, the microgrid is the solar panels that are over there? What, yeah, yes. What about the solar panels? That's part of the microgrid? Uh, the microgrid is a bunch of components, the solar panels, I'm not quite sure if the landfill solar panels go into the microgrid. The microgrid is mostly powered off of the fuel cell that is currently working at the site. That is the heart of the microgrid. Okay.
Okay.
That answered my question.
Thank you. Representative McDermott, you had a question? Oh, Mark, you're on mute. Okay, you're good.
I was on my phone, it's not coming.
Oh. Okay, we can hear you. Oh, Mark, we can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
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 Okay, you need to, are you need to?
You just got muted again.
Does he have both his computer and his cell phone?
Yeah, I think so. Mark, you need to turn one thing off, probably. You know what, while we figure that out, maybe is anyone else, does anyone else like to speak and we'll go back to Mark? I don't know if we have any other. Mark, can you talk? Yeah, Mark, maybe you can put your question in a chat and I can read it. Meanwhile, I'll have Representative Gale, you wanted to ask something?
Yes, I'm just wondering, is this the only project that has been approved that has yet to be implemented by the WPCA? Or there are other projects that have been approved by the RTM that are still on hold?
At this point, no, this is the last of a round of projects that we've been trying to unroll with the grants that we've had received from the federal government. The next project won't, you won't see for quite a while, which would be the Easton, or not Easton, I'm sorry, that's been approved, the East Trunk Sewer Line, but that is still months and months and months away.
Thank you.
Representative Georgiades, you had a question?
Yes, I was gonna try to jump in for Mark here. Brian, as you said, this is a Hurricane Sandy grant that was offered up and approved by the RTM in 2016. The delay has caused a significant amount of money, over $200,000 if my calculations are correct. So, is this, is the town expected to pay for that significant amount of money if the delay was caused by FEMA and things outside of the town's control? Thank you.
So, the project, the grant, and this sometimes happens with grants, and I know it's frustrating, but the grant was written at the time in 2016 in a, as a tranche of grants that were put into the Connecticut, to the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Relief Fund. At that time, the cost that was put into the grant was for $463,000. That was not the cost based off of the design work that was subsequently completed by the town. So that number that was put in as part of the grant was lower than what that bid cost came back as in January 15th, 2019. At that point, the bid came back at $641,000. So while it is higher, you know, it's not, we wouldn't be doing this if we didn't currently have the grant, we would be paying for the full amount of the project. So, we were delayed again, a year because of approvals from FEMA, so that's where the additional, you know, the difference, the delta between $717,000 and $641,000, that's what we're basically, that's the difference between the first bid and the second bid, if that makes sense. So, the project, when it was initially granted by FEMA in 2016, was probably short the total estimate.
Representative Georgiades?
That's helpful, this is Drew again. That's helpful, but why go through, why put the RTM or the town through the process of approving a number that is so significantly incorrect?
Unfortunately, the process is that you have to accept the grant from the, from the federal government and then start the design work for the project, because we don't have just all these projects designed sitting out there once these grants are approved. So unfortunately, as you've seen in the past when we've gotten grants, the original grant, when it's done, is normally based off of a proposal or a quick estimate that is provided either by a contractor or worked up internally. So, once the design is completed, generally that is bid-ready construction-level documents. So, I don't know what happened when the original grant was written, I don't know what, you know, information was provided to FEMA as part of that original grant, but obviously when they hired the contractor, the engineer, to come in and design the project and put it out to bid, it resulted in somewhat of increased costs. And that has just been exacerbated a little bit by the time that has elapsed since 2016.
Yeah, because it's a lot of time.
Uh, yeah.
If you think it's a significant amount of time, the cost would have gone up no matter, even if the bidding process was more accurate or the estimation had been more accurate.
Yes.
We've seen that time and again, as they delay us, it costs us more.
Correct. That's why it's imperative we get this, now this is a critical piece of infrastructure for the town's WPCA. Without it, we would not be able to run the plant during extended outages after a significant storm like Sandy. So we've tried to turn this around as much as, as fast as possible since we got the award letter, the recertification award letter from FEMA, and went out to bid, and, I mean, these numbers are the numbers right now.
Thank you.
Representative Gottlieb?
Julie Gottlieb, District 5. So, this might be a broader question and less for Mr. Carey, and I think it's partially having listened to the Board of Finance and their recent budget hearings, do we have somebody, or is there anyone who is looking at, when we get these grants, and understanding that we have large periods of time that can go back, can take place for one reason or another? I'm thinking about like the elevator at the Woods Branch and this, and you know, there's a couple of other projects. Do we have somebody that is riding herd on where these things are, whether it, just sort of keeping track of, you know, concerns, accountability, almost a project manager? We have that with us with the schools when we do a, when we do a renovation or we do anything with the schools, we have a building committee and somebody is on top of that all the time. And I'm just wondering, do we, do we have something in there to keep track of all that and then I think report back, because I think not only, not constantly report back, but so that we are getting a feel for where we are spending more money and if there's some, if there's decisions that are going to be made, that how much money we owe impacts in some fashion. I'm thinking that Mr. Walsh asked for something like that as well, I could be wrong, but I think that would be, it would be helpful, and if there's not somebody on staff that does that, that is perhaps something to consider.
Well, I can talk to that just real quick from Brian, but all these projects that you've seen coming through in the past three to, two to three months are stuff that I inherited and I've been pushing through as they've come along. So yes, there are projects that were kind of floating out there, and we're doing our best to make sure that all the grant deadlines are being met and the requirements are, you know, we are meeting all the requirements moving forward, and that these projects are coming to fruition, because we don't want to lose this grant money. But some of them have had a long history, but this should be really the last of that.
Oh, actually, I'm going to go back to Representative Gottlieb because she did have one more comment.
Just very quickly, and I want to thank Brian, I know he, you know, he's been doing more than his fair share of town duty, so it was less a, I don't want to, it was less a criticism or a, it's more just on a, on a broader base if that's something we can keep an eye on. That was all, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Bovee?
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my question, I think it's for Mr. Carey. I understand that you have inherited these things, so it's not a criticism, it's really just a question about process. Once the RTM approves a project, like the elevator or generator or whatever, is this project then put on a construction schedule? Excuse me, is this project put on a construction schedule or a project schedule that someone is then monitoring?
Uh, if it's, yes, so there's different, there's different buckets of different types of projects, there's, you know, there's capital, you know, the capital, the short-term capital, the long-term capital, and then basically the grants. So yes, we are monitoring those to make sure that things are being done in a, you know, once it's approved, it's approved for bonding, that we're moving quickly to get those projects designed and out to bid.
Can I follow up?
Sure.
So, if the projects are in the process, once they have been approved by the RTM and the money is allocated, and they're put on a schedule and being monitored, where in the process do you think we could denote a place that we can save time so that we don't end up having such a delay that apparently is very costly to the town?
Well, in this case, in this particular case, this was, this was really a issue with getting the FEMA approvals, so I, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't have a good answer about how to speed up the federal government to have them do something in timely manner. I mean, we've had a great relationship with them, there were some changes at the Department of Housing up in Hartford, where our project manager was actually kind of just recently left, so there's some changes there, but mostly everything, you know, we try to get things done a year after they're approved through the capital planning process, unless there's some real large unforeseen circumstances that we come into design. I mean, the last thing we want to do is come back and ask for additional money if the bids are, you know, if it's overbid or something like that. But, you know, we're, the administration currently, we've been going out to bid before we've been seeking approval for funding for some of the capital projects, which at least that way, we're coming in with more realistic numbers than what's been provided under the 14-point summaries in the past.
I see what you're saying, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Any other comments before we take a vote? I can't see any hands raised, so you'll have to chat to me if you, or chat to everyone if you do want to be recognized. Okay, seeing none, can you all unmute so we can take a vote? Okay, all in favor of this resolution, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Okay, thank you, the motion passes, thank you, Mr. Carey.
Madam Moderator?
Item four on the, yes.
It's Mark McDermott, can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? I just, okay, thank you, I think I'm fixed.
Okay, good, thanks. So we'll turn to item four on the agenda. This is to hear, consider, and act upon the following bond resolution as recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Resolve that in accordance with the recommendation by the Police Chief and Fire Chief, a lease between the Town of Fairfield, Town of Westport, and Sacred Heart University for premises to be used as joint 911 emergency communications center be and hereby is approved. And RTM, let's see, and further resolve that the lease between the Town of Fairfield and the Town of Westport as tenants and Sacred Heart University as landlord, covering premises consisting of approximately 2,900 square feet of the library basement of the Sacred Heart University property located at 5151 Park Avenue, Fairfield, Connecticut. Upon the terms and conditions set for the uses and purposes contained in said lease be and hereby is approved, and further resolve that the First Select Woman be and hereby is authorized to execute such documents as may be required to effectuate this resolution. Is there a motion to approve this resolution? And I ask that you chat if you want to make the motion, so I'm sure that I know the name of who's doing it. Representative Vergara has moved, or second? Representative Wolke, second. Okay, thank you. I'd like to ask, we have the Town Council, Mr. Baldwin, Fire Chief McCarthy, and Police Chief Liddy, I believe, all on the call, so if you gentlemen could please address this item, that would be great.
This is Attorney Baldwin. I'll start it off simply by explaining that this is, in almost all respects, the same lease that was approved, I think, last July, if I'm correct, by the RTM when the, when the site was supposed to be located at the GE campus, and that site has now changed, and the location has now been placed on the main campus at the library, in the basement of the library. And there's some more open space there, it's apparently a better location for the, for the facility. I'll let the Chiefs address those more technical issues, but I'm happy to answer any questions about the lease itself.
Thank you. Chief McCarthy, maybe, would you like to speak, or Chief Liddy?
Chief Liddy here, yep. Mr. Attorney Baldwin is correct in that the space has changed, we like the space better than the original location. Again, this is Again, this is a 12-and-a-half-year lease for a dollar a year. The space affords us many possibilities in terms of future expansion beyond what the original space had offered it. So we're pretty happy about it and hope it seeks your approval.
Thank you. Chief McCarthy, did you want to add anything? Not sure if he's still on the call. Okay, I'm not sure he's on the call. Are there any comments or questions from the body? If you could please chat to me and let me know, that would be great. Marcy, are you there? Marcy, if you're speaking, we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, now I hear you.
Marcy Spolier, District 4. I was just wondering, this new location, it's in a basement. I was just making sure that it's not in the floodplain. That's one question. And then two, you mentioned, Chief Liddy, that there's opportunities for expansion. I'm just wondering, are they expansion for the same use or were you thinking of expansion for different uses than what this is currently proposed for? Thank you.
So although this space is in the basement, it's certainly not in a floodplain. And actually, because of the sloping grade of the campus, it's really almost ground level to begin with. This space actually affords us windows where the old space didn't, which is actually a great benefit for our telecommunicators and getting some natural sunlight into the facility. And when I talk about future expansions, not different scopes of the project, but we often envisioned other communities joining on board with us so that we see future cost savings for the Town of Fairfield.
Thank you. Any other questions? Lisa Havy, Representative Havy, did you have a comment or a question?
Yeah, Lisa Havy, District 6. I have a question about parking and how many people will be using the facilities per shift or how many people you can expect to be on staff at a time, and will there be enough parking for now and in the future?
Yes, so the total population of the 911 center would be 22 employees. So depending on the shift, it could be anywhere from four to seven people in the room currently. So yeah, we're talking about seven parking spaces, and that actually has already been discussed with Sacred Heart. I'm sure you're aware that they have broken ground on a parking garage that's going to greatly help with the parking, but they have promised us dedicated parking spaces for the telecommunicators.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments before we go to the vote? Okay, I'll ask that everyone unmute so we can do a vote. Just seeing if everyone's unmuted. Representative Georgiades is not unmuted. Representative Monahan. Representative Wolk. You can unmute so that we can vote. Representative Steele. Okay. Yep. Thank you. Okay. All in favor of the motion regarding the lease, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Anyone abstaining? Okay, thank you very much. You can mute again. Thank you. Okay, the motion passes. Thank you very much. Item five on the agenda. Resolved that to hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Resolved that in accordance with a recommendation from the Acting Director of Public Works, in consideration of $1, the town grant to Aquarian Water Company of Connecticut, a perpetual easement over property owned by John J. Mitnick, Judith A. Mitnick, Mary Ann E. Mitnick, and the Town of Fairfield properties at #57 Beaumont Place and #3 Rugby Road, Fairfield, Connecticut. Said easement being shown and designated on certain survey entitled map showing easements to Aquarian Water Company from John J. Mitnick, Judith A. Mitnick, Mary Ann E. Mitnick, and the Town of Fairfield properties at #57 Beaumont Place and #3 Rugby Road, Fairfield, Connecticut, and prepared by Lux Consulting Engineers LLC. And further resolved that the First Select Woman be and hereby is authorized to execute on behalf of the town such documents as may be necessary to effectuate this resolution. May I please have a motion to approve this resolution? Representative Seabird has moved. Can I have a second? Anybody? Representative Gale, second. Thank you. Are there... Let's see. Mr. Carey and Attorney Baldwin, would you like to address this item?
This is Brian Carey, Acting Director. Yes, so this is a pretty straightforward matter. There's been some issues with the water, aging water line on Rugby Road out to Beaumont Street. Aquarian's just asking the town for the right to run the new water line through a portion of Rugby Park in order to replace that line and improve service to the existing customers in that area.
Thank you. Attorney Baldwin, is there anything else we should know or is that...
No, I think that that pretty much covers it. It's all very standard and the terms are perfectly good for the town's purposes, the mutual purposes of the parties.
Thank you. Anybody have a question or a comment? Representative Gale?
I'm just wondering, is this the area where they're going to have to change the pipes in order to serve the new development that's going in right by the train station that was recently approved by the zoning board?
No.
No, okay, nothing to do with that. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or comments before we vote? Okay, thank you. I'm going to ask everyone again to unmute so we can vote. Someday, we'll be back to doing this in person. It'll be so much easier.
Time will tell.
Yeah. All right. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Anyone abstain? Okay, thank you. The motion passes. Thank you. Okay, item six. This was on the supplemental agenda. To hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Resolved that pursuant to Fairfield Code 22-13, the Fair TV Commission is authorized to submit grant requests to the Cable Advisory Council of Area 2 under the auspices of the Connecticut Public Utilities Regulatory Authority. And resolved that the Fair TV Commission submitted an $81,967.85 grant request to Public Educational and Governmental Programming and Education Technology Investment Account or PEGPedia Grant Program for the purchase of certain equipment and related services attached hereto as Exhibit A. Now therefore be it resolved that Brenda L. Kupchak, First Select Woman of the Town of Fairfield, is duly authorized to enter into and sign contracts on behalf of the Town of Fairfield with PEGPedia Grant Program for the purpose of obtaining said grant funding. And further resolved that the First Select Woman is hereby authorized to accept said grant on behalf of the Fair TV Commission to provide such additional information and execute such other documents as may be required in connection with said grant, to execute any amendments, rescissions, and revisions thereto, and to act as the authorized representative of the Town of Fairfield. The motion has been moved by Representative Ferentz and seconded by Representative Bové. Thank you. Let's see. So if Mr. Jones from the Fair TV Commission is on the call, if you could explain this item to the body, that would be helpful.
Sure. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Sorry. So we basically have been lucky enough to win a Jessica Herter $82,000 grant. It's from, geez, I owe them at least to be able to say their name. It's the Public Education Government... Oh, I just can't find it. Sorry. Yeah, here it is. The Public Educational and Governmental Programming and Education Technology Investment Account. It's a state branch, and we have been awarded, as I said, just under $82,000. And we have a very unusually quick time period, and we have yet to understand why they operate this way, but we have until May 1st to accept this money.
Okay, thank you. Representative Wolk, recognizing you?
Hey, Wolk, District 5. I just want to thank you, Mr. Jones, for everything that you've been doing. This grant is very important for Fair TV, who has been underfunded for many years. So this is great news considering what's going on in the world, so I'm very happy this is going through, and I hope you'll support this. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your long-term Fair TV support.
Thanks, Andy.
Anybody else? We do need... This motion does need to be conditioned on the approval of the Board of Finance. The Board of Selectmen approved it today, and the Board of Finance is scheduled to have it on their agenda later this week. Representative Gottlieb?
So I'd like to make a motion... Actually, before I do, the Board of Finance is meeting now Wednesday, correct?
Yes, I believe that's right.
So I'd like to make a motion that we approve this subject to the approval of the Board of Finance on Wednesday.
Thank you. Representative Iapono, looks like you're seconding the motion? Okay, thank you.
Yes.
So we'll first vote on that amendment to the main resolution. So if everyone could unmute their phones, their... All in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Okay, thank you. So now we'll move to the main motion. All in favor of the main resolution, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Okay, thank you. The motion passes. Thank you. Can I...
Thank you very much, Andrew.
Yeah, that's great, Andy. So good that you got that. So thank you. Just before I ask for a motion to adjourn, Representative Georgiades pointed out that we also really need to thank the other workers who have been helping, in addition to the healthcare workers. It's been... A lot of essential workers are helping us all stay home safely, so we're very grateful to them.
Fairfield, Michigan, don't any town salary.
Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting, please?
Adjourn.
Representative Wolk? Representative Darrell, second. All in favor? I'm sure you're all in favor. Aye, aye.
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 Thank you very much. Folks, we're going to have budget hearings May 13th and 14th, so keep that on your schedule, and we'll release a hearing schedule soon for each day. Okay? Thank you very much. Have a good night. Okay. Bye-bye.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Good job.
Thank you.
Good job, Karen.